So, meeting with the Board of Selectmen, today is November fourteenth, 4:30 PM. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of the world. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. First of all, our business on the agenda is appointments, is tax class, but that starts at 5:00 PM. It's a hearing. We will jump to new business. Number one is police recruitment. We have Chief Richmond here. Welcome, Chief Richmond.
Good afternoon. Evening.
Good evening.
I had prepared a memo in advance. I can summarize that for the benefit of everybody here now and everyone at home. The last thirty-five days, we've lost four offices. Three have resigned to take police positions with other area departments, three separate area departments, for a variety of reasons, most of which have to do with pay and benefits. And we had a fourth officer, his retirement was finalized. So, where we had hired, we had three get out of the academies back in July. They came out of field training in early October and they are working right now. Reason why I'm before you now, as I've explained in the past, is extremely difficult to get academy seats and we revolve around the scheduling of the academy and the training is pretty intensive for the length of the academy and the field training when they, once they get out of the academy without an department. So, I'm looking for a motion to hire two offices now. My best case is that I would be able to get them into an academy that starts the end of February, which would, which would put them online probably around this time next year. We are not as dire need as we were in May of 2022 when we lost five, three to military service and two to the state police, but I'm afraid that we're gonna, we're gonna backslide. And I'm not sure that it's gonna be very difficult to, to recover from that if we backslide. So if we, I'm looking to hire two now and that's the motion I'm looking for tonight, but as, as part of the bigger picture, going forward, we're looking at probably three retirements in the next twelve to twenty-four months. So I probably would be looking for another two into an academy that starts next summer because they wouldn't be online until spring of 2025. It's unfortunate that we have to plan this far out, but again, we, we remain a department where our candidates are heavily recruited by outside departments and we just, we need to try to stay ahead of the curve, do our best to stay ahead of the curve and not get in that predicament that we were in abruptly in spring of 2025, uh, spring of 2022. There's a cost obviously associated with sending someone to the academy. I did not budget any, any funds to send anyone to the academy in FY24 because I thought we were gonna be upset with the three that we graduated. I didn't see these three people leaving, unfortunately. Salary wise, I think we can resolve that in the budget, in the regular salaries because of an open position we have and the fact that we still have an officer on military leave that we're only paying them a fraction of what they're entitled to. So there should be some money in FY24 budget, you know, to cover, you know, March, April, May and June salary, but there is, there are costs associated with the academy. Some of it we recoup, but it's, we recoup after the fact. So I have to see, you know, really, really shaggle my pencil and see where we can, you know, take some money out of the budget, but I probably be looking for additional funds to be able to send them to the academy for equipment and fees. It's about, it's about $9,000 per officer between equipment and it fees. Now, there is a, we can recoup, you know, thirty-two hundred of that. We do from the overtime from the recruits themselves for the recruit fee. Should we, the timing be right, we can recruit maybe about nine, another additional $900 for ballistic vests here at grant program, but we just gotta see how our time falls. But as, as Mr. Monticello could attest, the grant, eventually we have repaid in full for the vest. It takes, you know, it takes upwards of a year and a half, two years for that grant money to come back into the, into the co-office.
Certainly have some staffing issues, Chief. I think it, this conversation warrants, probably a little longer conversation, whether it's with me, Mr. Inkley and yourself and the town administrator, to get to the bottom of the staffing issues. You just talked about other retirees and things of the like, so I think, I don't know how Mr. Inkley feels.
Yeah. If, if we're walking into a situation where you need two now and there's a possibility we're gonna need three more, I, I think what Mr. Gasper just said, and it doesn't have to get pushed off for a long time, we can have a meeting this coming week. I think we need to sit down and actually really break it down exactly what the needs are because we don't wanna leave you short, but we don't wanna jump the gun either. And we definitely wanna make sure that monetarily, we're in a situation that...
To be clear, I'm only asking for two. If we move forward to start the list now and then we would revisit the additional two, you know, probably in, probably in February, but the academy seats are a premium. If we don't get somebody in the February academy, I can't just call and reserve seats and say, hey, save me two and we'll have two there on day one. All kind, all the, all the background checks that we have to do and all the testing has to be done ahead of time, usually a month before the academy starts. And those seats, those seats dwindle quickly. You know, I would really, you know, I would really recommend that we at least move forward with two and we can revisit the additional, the additional offices later because I, I don't know, I don't think, I don't wanna sound doom and gloom because I'm normally, I'm not normally like that, but I don't know that, the department will have a difficult time surviving what we went through last time. And if we don't act now, I'm afraid we're not gonna have the seats. If we have the bodies to go to an academy, we'll have to fight an academy, but we're not gonna be able to, if we miss that February academy, we're not gonna have bodies until spring of 2025.
Right.
That's unacceptable.
We have another meeting on the 28th of November. It's two weeks away. Can we have that discussion, internal discussion?
For the two, for the two people, yes, but if we miss out on the seats, I just want the board to be duly aware that if we miss out, especially with the holidays coming, you know, with, you know, with testing and, and things of that nature, if we miss that, we're looking at spring of 2025 and I'm not sure that that's gonna be a problem I'm gonna be able to solve.
What, what can you, what can you do between now and two weeks though?
Um, I can call through the list tomorrow. When we can, we can get the list, get the applications out, we can start doing background checks and once we have background checks, we're gonna have to make recommendations, we're gonna have to come back before the board to have the board, you know, tentatively appoint, provisionally appoint these, these people before we even send them for a medical test, a physical test, a psych test. All those things take time. When you get around the holidays, it, everybody's schedule tightens up. I'm not talking about our schedule, we're a 24/7 operation, but all these other, these other outfits, you know, their timeframe tightens up. And I really, really think the two weeks is gonna be, it's gonna put us behind the eight ball.
Mr. Kelly, you have anything to say?
Is this a new list you're looking for or the old list?
The list was, was updated as of July of this year, 2023. Because the way the exams work, you take the exam, your score is good for two years, but you can take the exam that's given every year, so they, they merge the lists. So, a bunch of people came off the list. I think there might be one person that remained from, from last time around, at least on the, you know, the higher numbers. I didn't go all the way down the list because you have public access to see what the list looks like, you know, until you actually pull it and see who responds. That's, you know, our actual list is who responds.
So if we, if we gave the authority tonight for the two to call from the list?
Mm-hmm.
And you could stop moving forward, it doesn't mean that we're locked into that, right? If we have that internal discussion over the next couple of weeks?
My understanding is if, that we, if I request the list and all of a sudden we, it's determined that, and I don't know how this would happen, that we cannot hire two people, that we could just say the positions weren't, you know, weren't hired or we weren't hirable.
You're saying that, that's okay?
Yes, yeah, if we're not hiring anybody, correct. You know, we couldn't just all of a sudden say take a, if we couldn't even attract a lateral, but we couldn't take a lateral, we couldn't ask for the list and then ask for a lateral from a different department and bypass the list, we'd have to use the list. If we, if we hire anybody, we'd have to come from that list.
Yeah, yeah. I think I'm okay with calling for the two.
Yeah.
Right now?
And in, in the call, if there's, you know, until we have that conversation, if there's some reticence or reluctance, you know, I am shooting for, for the February academy. If through these internal discussions, we determine that we can't send two people to the January, to the, to the February academy and we only send one and we send one to July, you know, we could do that, I guess. I wouldn't, again, I wouldn't recommend it, but we're not committing to an academy seat right now until we, until the board, I should say, you and the board, you know, appoint somebody.
Yep.
And we fill out an application.
For discussion purposes, you could also, after the two weeks, we could also go with three if the discussion went that way too.
We could as well, yes.
Yeah, we could always add to it.
Yeah.
But I, at this point, I mean, to handicap the chief on the two and miss that two weeks, I'd be...
I, I, yeah, I said, I'd like to try to move forward and again, when I come before, you know, when we come before you with those two, once we have those internal discussions, I would, I would probably recommend a third as an alternate, much as we did last time, where two people go and they're gonna be the ones that go and either they, they have a change of heart or something happens, they sustain an injury, they can't go to the academy, we would have that alternate to step in. We did that last December and that actually worked out tremendous for us.
Just wanna look at the bigger picture.
Yep.
You know, we've been doing this for a while, right? And it always seems like every few years we've fallen back. So I'm looking at the bigger picture is what do we do to be ahead of the curve, ahead of the curve? And you just talked about a couple of retirees, right? Whether or not that's...
Well, we have one, well, one retirement became effective, but in the next twelve to twenty-four months, potentially, again, nobody commits to anything.
Correct, correct.
But, but I can do math, you know, and...
Sure. The eligibility, the eligibility there.
And I would say in the next twelve to twenty-four months, there's gonna be at least three, three retirements. And we're not talking about the potential of other, of all the younger officers going somewhere. The problematic thing with the three that left us, two of them had nine years full-time service. That's, that doesn't happen. That doesn't happen, you know?
I know.
And frankly, I don't want any, you know, to, it's not like we were a toxic workplace or anything like that. It's frankly, it's pay and benefits and that, that's, that's the reasons why they're leaving and opportunities. You know, that's frankly why they, why all three of them left. They all left for more money. So, you know, that's, I don't want there to be any, any misconstrued that, you know, that's, all three of them, that's, that's what I'm fighting with. It's just, I've hired, you know, I've been chief for four years, which, you know, seems like not a long time, but I've hired better than half the department, the equivalent of half the department. And, you know, with people, you know, leaving and going to different, you know, different opportunities or whatnot, so it's...
I think I feel.
Yeah, just like I said, the day-to-day operations is, is difficult, you know, and I...
There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that play into why people leave, right? It's, you know, you've named a couple, but there's, there's many other reasons why people leave the departments. I'll leave it at that.
When does the person on the, in the military come back?
Uh, he, that was the one that re-upped. He is not due back until August or September of next year.
Yeah.
Of 25?
Of 2024. And that's, that's on his, that's the date on his orders, which then he's allowed the ...
Right, he's gotta come back.
It's gonna be up to nine days following that.
How long is that period? Is that period thirty days, something?
Oh, depending, it depends on the length of the deployment. In his case, he's eligible for up to ninety days.
Wow.
Because it's over a year.
Wow.
Yeah. Alright.
There a motion? Call for the list? That's what you need? Motion to call for the list for two offices?
Yes, please.
Motion to call for the list for two offices?
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
No, thank you very much and I, I look forward to that, that more in-depth conversation that certainly needs to be...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Next, we have the, you know, it's a car off Japanese Kitchen. I'm gonna pass it over that. The building commissioner is handling that situation currently. He'll be back in the office next week, so we can assure him that he would take care of what he needs to take care of on his end. Next, we have a application for a one-day liquor license, wine and malt beverages, indoor market at Diamond in the Rough, dog grooming business. I know they did the Pahtoba Fest in October. That's right, I said Pahtoba Fest in October and it was a huge success, so, to Diamond in the Rough, congratulations, keep up the great work over there. She runs a phenomenal business over there, brings people to the community. It's their motion to approve the one day with the license.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have Carla Morel, our Assistant Treasurer Collector, discuss health insurance policy, Chief, positively. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So I submitted a few weeks ago, a request to amend our current health insurance policy. As it currently reads, a new hire has to wait thirty days to get on our health insurance. And the reason behind that is so that we can collect a month's worth of health insurance deductions before they actually become active on the health insurance. As you know, we recently changed insurance companies and the way they run their billing cycle is prorated. And if an employee is hired before the sixteenth, they get charged for the whole month, which isn't conducive with our thirty-day waiting period. So my request is to change or amend our policy to read that they're hired as of the first of the month following their hire date. And also on the tail end, that we change the termination date, not as of the date they leave, but because they've paid for a whole month in advance, that we make that termination date the last day of the month that they're with us. So that there are no credits and refunds back and forth. It just keeps things cleaner and it helps the employee out, employee out as well because a lot of times, they have to wait for insurance at their new job. So I'm asking, proposing and hoping that you will approve that we change the acceptance date to the first of the new month and the termination date to be at the end of the month that they resign.
I have no problems with it. When you, you said the first part, the effective date being the first, that doesn't mean we can only hire people on the first, right?
Correct. No, it doesn't.
So we can hire any day of the month.
Correct.
The previous month.
Correct.
But they wouldn't stop paying for health insurance until the first paycheck of the new month.
They would start immediately with their next payroll to pay and catch up, but their health insurance coverage would start in the first of the month. So if you hire someone today, November fourteenth, the way your policy is written, they don't get insurance until December fourteenth. So if we change it, it would make it December first. And then I'll work with the employee to catch them up because every employee has to pay a month in advance. Their, their health insurance has to be paid a month in advance. So with a insurance company, if I hire someone before the sixteenth, they're going to charge me for day one through fifteen, even though the employee doesn't have coverage because of the way our policy is written. They have to wait till the thirty days.
Yes.
So I'm charging the employee for days they're not covered, which I'm not okay with and I'm sure you are not either.
Right.
So that's why, to change it to the first of the month following their hire date makes a lot more sense.
Okay.
And a determination date as well, so...
Is there a motion to what she said?
Sure.
You want, you want, you want a motion to stop the payment effective date the first of the month?
Could we amend the policy first?
A motion to amend the policy to the policy proposed by the Assistant Treasurer Collector, Benefits Administrator, et cetera.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Carla.
Should I stay up here for the next one?
No, not really. It's a pretty simple one, it's just...
I'm liking it up here. Let's go. Just kidding. Have a great night. Thank you.
It's come, it's come to question, again, some questions were asked of Ms. Morel on whether or not Friday, December twenty-second, and Friday, December twenty-ninth would be half-days for departments. So the reality of it is, is they've always followed the ASME contract and the ASME contract states half a day.
Yep. The problem is technically, under the contract, the eve is on a Sunday, so technically the carryover holiday would be Monday, but Christmas is on a Monday.
That's fine, I'm gonna solve the problem real fast for you.
Alright, do it like this.
Is there a motion to approve the half a day for Friday, December twenty-second as a half a day, and Friday, December twenty-ninth as a half a day?
So moved.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you, Ms. Morel.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Carla.
Good night.
Open positions, I put on the agenda, so we have a number of open positions. It's getting a little bit troubling. I got building department clerk, thirty-five hours, planning clerk, nineteen and a half hours, treasurer collector, thirty-five hours, assistant town accountant, thirty-five hours, town planner, thirty-five hours, and then I wrote maintenance worker, thirty-five hours. And I think the maintenance worker is the one that we could advertise on Indeed, but I believe all the other ones should be put on MMA. And I looked at MMA and none of these positions are on MMA.
We're going through two interviews with the treasurer collective person. We have that person scheduled to come in two seated, to, now that we've checked all the references, and so that one is pending negotiation. Applicant for the building department is tentatively scheduled for Friday.
Who's doing this interview Friday? That's the question.
Will be myself first to see if it's just basic and then we'll go on from there, but it's tentative, providing on it on Friday. Otherwise, it'll be the beginning of the week.
Okay.
It's my, it's my, it's, I've already talked to the building inspector about this individual. So, and I believe he's reviewed the resume and we are just checking to see if the person is still interested in the position and we would go forward from there with the formal interview if they're interested. For the planner, we have, are waiting for council and matipoisit to provide the board, the MOA, for splitting the planner with, or having the matipoisit planner, which they want to hire and use part, they wanna hire full-time and use part-time to split it with us on a regional MOA agreement. The maintenance, we just had someone resign and I agree, we can go back and post that on Indeed.
Okay, so you have the planning clerk still open, nineteen and a half hours. We don't have twenty-two hour jobs either. We have nineteen and a half hour jobs, thirty-five hour jobs and forty hour jobs in the town of Acushnet. There's no in-between. There's been some discussion about that and proration and everything else gets too complicated. So, that's a nineteen and a half hour job for the planning clerk, I think we need to advertise that. MMA's the best eyeballs for that. Anybody in municipal government uses MMA first. It's only seventy-five bucks for a hundred characters. Seventy-five bucks, you post the ad, you wait two days after the thirty days, you repost the ad, so you always stay visible on MMA's front page because I look at it all the time and things disappear and you can't see these job openings anymore. So the way I would be doing it is I would advertise, pay the seventy-five bucks, go thirty days, wait two days, repost it and you're brand new, fresh on MMA's website and you always have eyeballs for consistent sixty days. So hopefully, we're gonna do something with the building department clerk ASAP. I don't like seeing that office dock. I know Mr. Bob Ball is out on injury, but he'll be back next week. But I do know that he's in and out of the office and we do need somebody to tend to our residents. The assistant town accountant job needs to be posted ASAP. Leaving these positions vacant is putting a strain on our employees, other employees.
The assistant town accountant, the ad was approved by me today and given to the staff to send to MMA to post the technology communications position. Still dealing with the job description with the town accountant. We've almost finished that, it's in draft form. That will be probably posted next week.
For the assistant town accountant?
No.
Technology.
Technology.
Oh, the technology. I'd like to see the ad for the assistant town accountant before...
That's already been given to the staff to post. It was finished today.
I can put it on Indeed. I'll make sure it's on MMA, it's not already on MMA, or I can remove it from Indeed if you want.
I'd just like to see the posting before we advertise.
Oops. Sorry.
Don't big deal.
It's just sometimes the advertisement's just not cohesive with what we're trying to do, right? So, it's gotta be a salary range, DOQ language in there. Is that in there?
Fifty to sixty is the salary range.
Okay. Alright. Can we do something with the planning clerk as well? Get somebody in that office? Is it really?
We have...
Empty offices are doing us no, no good here.
We have someone part-time. I was hoping to see what was going on with the MOA, but that's been delayed with council on the planner and then go forward...
Just the planning clerk, at least if you had somebody in the office. I know that Paul's still there, he's helping us out, but he's, you know, per diem.
Part-time.
I mean, he can come in an hour, two hours, it's not the way to have an office staff. The salaries, all these salaries are inside the budget, so we need to do what we have to try to pride for these positions.
There was a plan to change it around, but the board didn't approve that plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Ms. Inkley.
Being, as this is the first treasurer collector interview since multiple interims, I would suggest that if possible for the next interview this coming week, that Ms. Morel be involved in that as well. Because if this works out well, I'd like her to be able to answer any direct questions that the candidate may have, to make sure that this goes smoothly. I think that'd be fair, just to make it easier on everybody that's involved.
Yeah, I think that's an important factor. I would ask that Ms. Morel, the town accountant and town administrator, conduct that interview.
The, Ms. Morel and I have already discussed it. The town accountant has already recommended this individual.
Okay. Make sure Ms. Morel's there, please.
You got two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes, you say? Alright, so what I'll do is I'm just gonna, I'm gonna jump over because that item is gonna take a little bit of time. Paving is gonna take a little bit of time. Jump right over to, just go out of order, I'm gonna jump right over to snow parking ban. So, from the DPW, by vote of town, meaning parking is restricted as follows. Water district parking allowed opposite side of the hydrants. Out of the water district, parking allowed north side of street running east and west and parking allowed on west side of streets running north and south. Violated subject to be towed away at owner's expense. Authority Article seventeen, March eleventh, nineteen seventy, annual town meeting, which was adopted, chapter forty, section twenty-two D of the general laws. Parking restriction in from December first, two thousand twenty-three to April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And that's a date from DPW for the snowstorm parking ban.
Do you have a motion?
No. I don't think so. It's just a, an announcement. I would just, I, I just, it's a little bit confusing for people at home, you know, east and west and all that stuff, just for the folks at home, if you know there's gonna be a major snowstorm and you have fire hydrants on your side of the road, please don't park on that side of the road.
Yep.
Basically, to sum it up easily for everybody. Other than that, you know, I know it's a snow parking ban, but to try to tell everybody in the village area over here, that's, you know, homes are more congested, to not park on the side of the road for four months out of the year, it's a little bit difficult. Just use some common sense if a snowstorm's coming. Don't park on the side of the road where the hydrants are. Please and thank you. Alright, is there a motion to open the tax classification hearing? I'm gonna declare at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For a call vote, Ms. Inkley?
Yes.
An ayes. Tax classification hearing is now open. Welcome, Ms. Carla.
Hello, everyone. I am here this evening to review the tax classification and shift options of burden of taxation by class. I have a presentation that will go along with it and I will just briefly make comments and then take... and then take questions if indicated. So this first slide is basically, we're looking at fiscal 2024 levy limit and ceiling. As in prior years, the calculation starts with the levy limit from fiscal 2023, which was $20,970,400. Then the proposition two and a half allowed increase would be $524,260. New growth is still estimated, it is not approved, of $201,113. That is a moving number that just wanted to do a disclaimer. For budgetary purposes, $250,000 was allocated as projected new growth. It is not feasible this year as we have had, as for new lot splits, they were none. And the ones that existed was just re-lining lot lines. And there were sixteen new house permits. And the rest of the growth is basically lying in the personal property class, where we've had two solar, two solar projects go online for calendar 2023.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the new growth number?
Yes.
The 201113?
Yes.
That's just an estimate right now, it has not been certified.
That is correct.
And then you talked about two solar farms. Are the two solar farms embedded into that new growth number?
For the personal property, yes, they are. So I know it's because of the unique legislation of solar revenue that is actually predetermined on page two of the recap. That number is almost practically backed out of new growth, if you will, for budgetary purposes. But when it's calculated as a whole, personal property class is part of that. So that would be part of that number.
So you go, we went back, let's go back to the words you used, budgetary reasons, right? So it's basically 201, but what was that personal property on those two solar farms? Because that should come off the 201, that's not to be used the 201 for budgetary purposes.
Right, no, budgetary purposes was the projection at the beginning of the year that I, that I am asked for annually when they were preparing the FY 2024 budget. At that time, I had been very prudent and I was conservative and gave a number less than the $250,000, I believe, don't quote me. But of course, we're asked to capture more or as much as we can. I don't have the data nor the growth to capture that, to get to that number this year. For whatever reason, it's just not there. As I said, we don't have a lot of growth in town. We don't have a lot of residential growth. We don't have a lot of commercial growth. Most of the growth is through personal property, through the utilities, solar farms and their components, and new personal property accounts that we're trying to capture. Everything else is really coming off of just that, new houses, additions, things of that nature.
I got it. So, so go back to my question, the 201?
The 201 includes personal property value growth and on the bottom-line number. On the LA 13, where we report that number, that solar revenue can't be backed out. It's backed out on page two of the recap, which is in a different, it's allocated differently.
Right, but the town used a projected number of new growth for 250 the previous budget year, right?
Yes.
And now, and so, let's follow. Now we're looking at 201.
Yep.
What I'm asking is what was the revenue from the two solar fields backed out of the 201? Was it 10,000, 20,000, 30,000?
Uh, if you give me a minute.
Because this is not a new growth number. We budgeted, what I'm trying to get, Kelly, is we, we, the town used 250 for budgetary reasons last year, okay? It came in at 201. If we just stay on track with that, we don't back out anything for the solar, we're $50,000 in the hole.
It's not the hole. It's basically, it's used for just that, for budgetary projections. I'm going to show you.
But we already spent that money, didn't we? Didn't we?
Technically, I would imagine you did.
Mr. Kelly's shaking his head, so yes, we already spent that money.
So I'm going to show you the breakdown of growth. It's all up, it's going to be up on the screen. And what we're looking at.
Oh, don't look at, don't make sure that stays, yep, there you go.
What's that?
Your password.
Oh, it's not that.
It's up on the camera.
That's all right.
You changed it tomorrow.
No, if anybody wants it, feel free. Okay, here we are. So this is a question at a glance. So LA 13, LA 13 is the tax base growth. So if you look at personal property down at the bottom, the value of personal property at the $4 million translates into new growth tax levy of about $74,000.
Yep.
Allocated just for personal property, that's all personal property. However, for the solar farms, I will show you. We are looking at. Okay, what happened? Here we go. So personal property, here we go. So the solar farms are at. Where are you? Uh, trying to find them, because they don't have any particular order. So 355 Main Street, line 140, new growth value of $563,432. Value, not taxes.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
And then the 1209 Main Street, $62,745. So those two are basically the allocation of new growth of just solar, value. If you add those two numbers up, multiply it by 1698 and divide it by 1,000, you will know what the new growth tax levy allocation would be. So if you add those two, divide by 1,000, multiply by 1698, which is last year's.
Okay, I add the two, you want me to divide by what, 1,000?
1,000, and then multiply by 1698.
So it's only $10,625.
Okay.
So basically, there's really 191,000 roughly, right? We'll call it 10 grand even, $191,000 of new growth for budgetary reasons.
Well, that were not met, if you will, because again, I did this in March or February of 2023. The budgets are voted upon at town meeting, May of '23, with the number, the soft number of the 250 there. And then we're going into the real budget time of what's going to be allocated from taxation for the budget is these numbers right here. So I did not make the projection of the number. I didn't think I was, so that's why I'm doing full disclosure at this time. For whatever, like I said, the new growth is just not there for the town. If it doesn't, if, I can't just make it up, obviously.
No, I know, of course you can't just make it up. Wish you could just make it up, wave that one and bring in the money. All I'm saying is, am I interpreting this right? That we have roughly $60,000 shortfall from what was projected last year, what we watched?
In new growth. In new growth.
But we, but I believe we spent the 250.
You'll have to make it up by your excess levy capacity. You've been leaving like $140,000 of excess levy capacity over the past three fiscal years, close to the tune of almost $600,000. That wasn't collected through taxation. Basically, that was done to reduce the tax rate ultimately. So with that being said, because of this additional, let's say, $60,000, I don't think that would be prudent to do because it would not cover the budget gap at this point because those funds were not collected from, or not presented by new growth on the tax levy.
There's a number of options we'll have to deal with choosing one in May to adjust for this 60,000. That's one method, we could look at the overlay for another method.
Absolutely, overlay is in very good shape.
I'm not, I'm not worried. I'm just trying to figure things out of what we did.
I understand, you're trying to be proactive, absolutely. But overlay is, we've been, we've been very fortunate where we haven't had a lot of overlay that has, has had to be expended. I think there's over a million dollars in overlay and they haven't been, the selectmen have not asked for overlay surplus release for any type of capital expenditure or budgetary gap over the past several fiscal years. That is the cushion and that's why it's there, kind of with these situations just like this. Abatement-wise as well, over the past, I'm probably going to jinx myself right now, over the past four fiscal years, abatements have been very, very conservative as well. A lot of communities, a lot of my fellow colleagues have had, last year alone, I had fifteen abatements total out of 4,700 bills, if you will. Other communities have close to the range of a community this size, 50. So that's a very low number. So overlay is, has been in good shape, which is a good thing. I'm going to, do you want me to go back to this first slide or we're good?
No, you can keep going, I was just getting to the bottom of that new growth number where it's really at.
The debt exclusion, again, that is an accounting number that's plugged in, 429,45. So the maximum allowed levy for fiscal 2024, so 22,125,258. Here, it shows the percentage of value as it's distributed by class. The residential class is 88.6% of the overall $1.8 billion value of the town. Commercial, 2.1%, industrial, 1.9%, personal property, 7.2%. With that being said, the $22,125,258 would project a single tax rate this year of 1201 per thousand dollar of value. So that explains this, basically taking the total levy, dividing it by the value of the town, you get a single tax rate. You can stop me if you have questions or.
No, I've been through this a little bit with you before.
The classification, again, the base, the whole purpose of this, of the shift, tax shift, is to take burden off of classes. Usually, the case is to take the burden off the residential class, normally in most communities. You can go up to 150%. That impact, the shift on the various classes differs depending upon the percentage of total value. Since the town of Acushna is predominantly residential, that's where you try to allocate the tax burden away from. That's basically what this is all about. This next chart just shows the shared percentage of value depending upon the shift. So if you go across the first line, it's all the numbers that I presented, which is the first column on the left, the percentage by class. The middle column, tax levy by class, by tax levy amounts by class, and then the estimated tax rates on the far right. So if you go down that list, it just breaks it down, that information. So let's just, for example, last year, the Board of Selectmen ratified a 35% tax shift. So if you look at that on this chart, if it was fiscal 2023, let's say, the shared percentage would be 95%, I'm sorry, would be 84.6% residential, 2.9% commercial, 2.6% industrial, and 9.8% personal property. And the tax rates would go to 1147 and 1622. Last year's tax rate with the same shift was $12 and 1698.
What was last year's tax rate, Kelly?
$12 and 1698. This next is a comparison of average values, fiscal '23 versus fiscal '24. On the Excel sheet that I gave the Board of Selectmen in regards to the scenarios of different tax shifts based on value and the difference of percent change of total value is at the bottom. That's where I kind of, these numbers are drawing from, to drawing the percent change. So for fiscal 2023, for example, well, I'm sorry, for residential, if you look at fiscal 2023, the average single home value, 394,000. This year, fiscal '24, the average value, 427,900. It's a value difference of about $33,900, which is the 8% change, which coincides with the percent change of total value by that class. This is just isolating, of course, single-family homes. The residential class does contain more than the single-family home, but that's what predominantly has the most accounts in Acushna. Commercial.
Right, that tells you that your taxes aren't going down based on, because your tax rate's gone down.
It is an opposite relationship.
Correct, your value went up, so your tax rate should come down, right? But it doesn't mean your tax bill's coming down.
The next slides will give you some tax dollar numbers. Let me just finish up. On the commercial, the FY '23 average value, 413,600. FY '24, 466,100, with a 12% change. And that coincides, if you do, basically, I just isolated commercial, but it's commercial-industrial. And if you look across, it says 10 and 15, that's why it's about the 12%. I'm talking about the Excel spreadsheet with the, with the orange color that you have. Okay, this is what you're, the question that you had, Kevin, in regards to if the same tax shift as FY 2023 is ratified, if you look what's in black, the average tax bill was $4,728. If the same shift were to be, oh, sorry. If the same shift were to be ratified this year, you're looking at the tax bill of $4,908, which is basically a difference of annual tax of $180. As for the commercials, if you kept the same shift, the tax shift would be, the taxes would go from $7,022.93 to $7,560.14. Of course, the average values went up, a change of $52,500 of value. Difference of annual taxes would be about an additional $537.
On that, on that value.
On that value. That's, I've been using averages, so we're comparing comparable numbers. The 125 shift scenario, which is what the Board of Assessors has recommended for this year, for the residential class, you're looking at an additional $248 of the annual tax bill. You can see the change of the numbers. The commercials would actually go down $22.11. Of course, keep in mind, that is because the shift is less on them with 125 as 135 last year.
Yeah, but so the, you just said.
Their tax rate's going, because more of it's on residential now, so the $22 difference is because you, the ratification went down 10% hypothetically, if 25% is allocated this year by the recommendation of the Board of Assessors, which is just the recommendation.
Right, but that would increase the residential taxpayers' bill.
It would.
What's, what was the difference in the two numbers, so?
100, 248.48 for 125 residential. 125 commercial-industrial would reduce the tax bill on an average of $22 annually.
Right, but can you go back to the residential one?
Absolutely.
So using that value.
248.48 would be the increase.
From 180, right?
Yeah.
So it's talking another 60 bucks, moving the shift down to 125.
Mm-hmm. I'm just presenting the numbers, so you can take it, you know, look at them and make an educated decision. This is the 150. The 150 for the residential would increase the tax bill by 8160 because again, we have a overall 8% percent change of value. So tax rates go down, values go up, doesn't mean your tax dollars go down, as you said. If you use the same shift for the commercial, it goes up quite substantially, $1,376.19, because the tax rate goes to 1802 with a 50% shift putting more of the burden on the commercial-industrial-personal property class. This is a 140 shift scenario. And you have it all printed out as well, which would be $150 added. And for the commercial, 816. Of course, these are, these are not exact numbers, they are estimated numbers. The 130, $150 additional for the residential taxpayer. And for the commercial, 257.55.
Can you, can you say that again, Doug?
Yep, you have it, you have the, you have the slides too on paper, just so you know. I'm sorry, but what do you want me to go back to?
I can't see the fine print over here.
Why, they're pretty big. I can't see either, I was very nice, I mean, mine are large. That's pretty large.
I have glasses, but anyways, going back to the board so everybody at home can see. You went, you went to the 130.
This is 130, yep.
On residential, I thought you said the bill would go up 150.
Yep, right here.
Oh, because the 135 makes it go up 180, right? Yeah, okay, so that makes more sense now, okay. All right, well, that's for us to figure out, once we get all the other financial information. Yes, sir.
Just, so the board is anticipating next year, it's a reevaluate?
We are in a reevaluate for FY 2025, that is correct. So that's basically where this Department of Revenue kind of scrutinizes the whole valuation process a little bit more intimately. I deal with the DOR rep and, uh, they will do, uh, EQ values for the town, do spot checks on the town. The whole process of.
So does that mean they're gonna come to my house and say to me, that's really not worth the value that we have on it?
No, not if, uh, you're not picked out of the lottery, no. It's, I do it by lottery, literally like the law, and I, and I pick the properties that they own.
I think I said something about that on time, any floor, right? I don't believe that my house is worth four hundred thousand dollars at all, but some people are buying it for that price, right? It's just crazy.
It's the market.
The market's crazy, right?
Willing sellers and willing, willing buyers set the precedent.
I'm willing to sell it a half a million if y'all wanna buy it, but, you know, it's just, doesn't make sense. I guess I'm old, I guess I'm old school, right?
Exactly, exactly. So that, that, those are the numbers, gentlemen, so I know, um, the ratification, I've been, you're gonna consult, and we're gonna continue this meeting, is that correct, or?
That's my opinion. I need more financial, um, information from the Town Accountants Office and Mr. Kelly and have that conversation.
Okay.
So I, what I really need to do is look at the recap sheet, that's what I do every year with Mr. Kelly. I haven't had an opportunity to do that for this year's recap sheet, to see what's really going on, um, and try to make sense of it all. So, you know, we'll, we'll see, um, where we end up from there.
Do you have any other questions for me?
I do not, but thank you very much for the explanation. You always do a great job.
Thank you. Feel free to come and visit me.
I will, I will. Um, is there a motion to postpone the tax classification?
To continue.
Continue, I'm sorry, to continue the tax classification hearing to November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at four P M, four thirty P M?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right. So going back into a new business, um, got several complaints of an issue arising at Eileen Street. It's a paper street, complaints on a paper street. Just gonna read through some of this that I was provided. Four twenty-five, unattended fire. Four twenty-six, approached neighbor and asked politely, asked not to leave while he has fire burning. Four twenty-seven, the day after, unattended fire. Five-ten, started fire in dumpster and left surrounding trees, caught on fire, police and fire departments were called and responded. Five twenty-two, unattended fire, police and fire departments were called. Six-two, began crushing Paul's blue trailer with a machine. Six-three, burning insulation, other items, entire neighborhood filled with fumes and smoke, fire department called and responded. Six-six, unattended fire. Seven-six, call the Board of Health. Seven-six, had a new white trailer delivered, have video. Seven-nineteen, call Board of Health, woman said she would send certified letter and was going to notify Conservation Commission. Seven-twenty-seven, called Mass D E P to notify, his property was located within the estimated habitat and rare life, rare wildlife zone, no call back. Seven-twenty-nine, started to take things out of dumpster and pile on the side of the road, police were called and have photos. Eight-ten, fire department responded, someone else called. Nine-three, call Board of Health to address the pile of garbage. Woman said she would reach out to get a timeframe on when he planned on having garbage piled cleaned up. Nine-three. Call the police department to have a pile, the pile addressed, police responded. Ten-eighteen, call Board of Health to follow up, woman states that she would have the health agent take her ride out. No information on timeframe. Four truckloads of material were brought in somewhere in the Ja, the July area to fill in property. There's exposed wiring laying on the ground going into the trailer that was brought in. Crushed trailer, I put this note down, the crushed trailer, so if the trailer was crushed, which is indicated, the pictures were taken, that would require a demolition, um, permit, the property is subject to a Title V. Um, uh, I'm looking at all these complaints, I don't know why you would call the Board of Health to address the pile of garbage and reach out to get a timeframe on when someone planned on having the garbage picked up. I would think that the Board of Health would respond immediately to garbage on the side of a road, put into a paper street, um, and ask for immediate cleanup of that to occur. This is a problem, um, in the neighborhood. Uh, I think a cease and desist order needs to be issued. I believe the building inspector, the wire inspector, the health agent, and the conservation agent need to be involved.
Excuse me, sir.
With what's going on here, and a cease and desist order to correct, order to correct the need to be issued.
I'm not owner of that property.
Okay.
And, um, these are problems that this lady is, we can be pleased when he started with me. Um, I was cleaning up the property.
You wanna come to the podium and let us know your name?
My name's, uh, Josh Baraval, I'm the one that bought the property, and, um, I believe it was April sixth, I took over the property.
Okay.
Uh, pretty much all the, the only one that's complaining is her. Um, I, I, I did everything the right way, uh, I called the cops on her, cause she's been threatening me. I do have the police reports. Um, every time I just go to do work over there, she's constantly just out bothering me, stepping on my property, saying, oh, you can't do that, you can't do this. Uh, I think she's working for the town or something. But I just told her very nicely, please mind your own business, go on your own property, I called the cops, I got everything documented. The only reason why that the stuff was going out there, because when we were having the trailers moved, to clean out, um, we were having some problems with the trees, cause they were too low. And then I was gonna have the cement truck and everything come in, cause I was having some work done there, I'm doing all the permits and everything like that. And, um, she's just constantly calling the cops on me, but another thing too is, not only, I'm putting stuff there, but I was gonna get rid of it all. And then I told the cops, when I called the cops, the cops were like, well, listen, she's throwing stuff there too. So, you know, why are you gonna pay to get rid of everything? I said, exactly. So she's blaming me for dumping all that stuff over there, but she's dumping it too. I have pictures of the landscaping guys dumping stuff right in front of my street, and it rolls down, and then they just blow it all into my lot, like it's, you know, it's like a piece of junk.
Dumping stuff, when you say dumping stuff, leaves on garbage bags, where you're dumping garbage bags on the side of a paper street? And stockpiling wood piles and all the other junk.
I'm, I'm stopping the wood because it was pre-cock, I'm not gonna use it, I'm gonna give it to somebody that can use it and burn it for free. The only reason why I was out there, because the trailer was kinda blocking the road a little bit, because I had the guys trying to move it, but she came out screaming, I'm gonna call the cops and all this. And she doesn't even own that property on the side, she's got all kinds of junk there too. She's got her trailer that she just moved, she's got her truck, she's got all kinds of dead leaves, they're dumping over there, branches from the trees and all kinds of stuff. But then she's yelling at me for dumping stuff there. When, when I physically was gonna do that, I was gonna remove everything, and I told the cops that, but then the cops were seeing her dump stuff there too. So what am I supposed to pay to remove her stuff? I want my property to look nice. You know, I'm trying to do the best I can. I've got an eight-year-old daughter, you know, I, I bought this property with cash, I'm trying to do the best I can with it. And the whole time she's been on my butt, the whole time.
Okay, well, it's not just one neighbor? I talked to several neighbors over there, and, and the whole part of busting up the old trailer, um, and burning? And then laying a dumpster on fire and leaving?
Sir, I, I, what happened was, I hired a company to do that, to, what happened was, a couple of trailers there, I had another trailer that was laying on the side of the property, completely looked like garbage. I can give you the police reports with, what they said in there if you like. But pretty much I got rid of the trailers, and I, I found somebody on Facebook that does scrap metal, I called them up, they came down there, they cut it up. But I guess when they got cut up, they threw one of the fibers into the dumpster, and it started the dumpster on fire at night. I was not there. And as far as the other times, yes, she did come over and tell me once that I was having a problem with fire, I guess it relit, I said, I'm very sorry about that. And then I, you know, I ended up getting the water turned on. But, you know, and then I, after that, I stopped from burning anything, but then I'm watching everybody else burn, and I'm the only one, you know, that's sitting now. So I, I know that she's got something up against me, not to show, but I'm not having problems with any of the other neighbors, the other neighbors like me.
I just don't think that you should be taking your garbage off of your property and sticking it out in a paper street along somebody else's property, right? It's garbage that brings rats.
Yep.
So you need to clean that stuff up, right? So we're gonna, we're gonna ask the buildings, we're gonna tell the building inspector, the wire inspector needs to go out there, the health agent needs to go out there. Um, and, and something needs to be done. I mean, you have to do things with permits, you smashed up a, a trailer, it requires a demolition permit, did you get that?
Sir, it was, it was, it was an extra trailer that was just sitting there, it wasn't part of the house, he had all kinds of trailers. If you see, if you see pictures of the yard, the whole yard was trashed everywhere.
So the blue, so the light blue trailer that Mr. Paul Leahy owned is gone. Where did that go?
That's in the yard. There's another trailer in the yard.
Yeah, the one that you brought in, the double wide white one, right? There's a double wide white one there.
It's not a double wide, no, sir, it's not.
It's not the same trailer, dude. It's really not. I hate to say it, but it's not the same trailer. It's not. The trailer that Mr., if you go on Patriot Properties, and we have near, near map, we can see all the changes to that property, okay? That's a light blue trailer that Mr. Paul Leahy owned.
Yep.
Now you have a wide, wider, white trailer there.
No, sir, that's, that, that's not wider, that's pretty much the same, it's, it's the same thing.
Okay, well, there's, there's, there's rules and standards that you need to follow. You can't just be bringing in things and without building permits, you have to have permission to do all this stuff. Did you, did you come to the town and get?
Yes, I did. I talked, I talked to Andy about it, I asked him, what do I need to do to get everything ready? But in the meantime, I thought I was doing what was right, I was cleaning up my property, the place was a disaster. And the only problem, her yard faces my yard, so she just stands out there, she looks at me. I, I'm not throwing the junk out there to be a jerk, what happens is, the road got blocked from the trail, and they left it there, because the lady was threatening to call the cops and everything like that. I, I'm just trying to be a friendly neighbor, I'm trying to do the right thing, I don't, you know, my father's right here, he can witness what, you know, what she's been saying to me and all the stuff that she's been starting. But, you know, I'm just trying to do things the right way, and I, and I've been talking to Paul, and, and he tells me what I gotta need to do, and I've been getting it together, I was just.
Paul?
Uh, I mean Andy from the Board, um, Andy from the Health, uh.
Building Department?
Building Department, correct.
Okay, well, you need permits to do things before you do things though, you understand that?
Yes, sir, all I, all I was doing was just cleaning and getting rid of metal and just cleaning the property and cleaning up the brush and just.
I understand cleaning up metal and stuff like that, right, but piling garbage bags outside of your property line, or just piling them up on your property is not acceptable, it brings rats.
Well, but, but, sir, it's not.
When would you, when would you say, you said you had a dumpster, why wouldn't those garbage bags be in a dumpster to get rid of?
The dumpster was full, I, I've got receipts, I spent like seven thousand dollars on dumpsters already, sir, I was, I wasn't trying. It, that was just like insulation, like foam inside the bags, it's not like junk of garbage, and shit, it was just, I, I, what I wanted to do, I wanted to put it up there so somebody could back in and take it, same thing with the wood. And then the whole time, she's throwing stuff over there and all kinds of, she got all kinds of junk over there, lawnmower parts and all kinds of junk, and it's not her property either. And I'm just, you know, I, I just don't know why she's gonna bother me, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get rid of it, there's metal over there that a scrap guy's gonna pick up. You know, I'm, I'm gonna clean it up, but the thing is, I shouldn't be responsible for all the stuff that she's throwing out there.
I'm not, I'm not trying to imply that you are responsible for her stuff. Um, I've been by there numerous times, and the pile just seems to be getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Uh, I don't, you said you spent seven thousand dollars on a dumpster. Maybe you need to spend another thousand dollars to get the dumpster back and put the stuff in the dumpster and let it be hauled away, and then everybody, everybody can be happy as far as that goes, right? But you've disconnected, somebody's disconnected wiring off the old mobile home. The new one's being brought in, there's pictures of it coming down the road. So it's a different mobile home, it's not Mr. Lee's light blue one, nobody's gonna try to convince me of that, that it's the same one, cause it's not the same one. You can't just have wiring conduit hanging around, that's a safety issue. Little kids, there's a lot of little kids in that neighborhood. I'm very familiar with that neighborhood, it's not that far from my property, okay? And the reality of it is, is the last thing we would want, I think the last thing that you would want, is some little kid from the neighborhood on his or her bicycle and drives down that road not knowing what's going on and touch one of those wires, it'd go off and be, be killed, right? So the wire inspector needs to get out there and do an inspection, okay? If the surface needs to be cut until a panel's put in place and it's proper for wiring, for you to draw electricity off of, that's fine, but it all needs to be permitted.
Yeah, no, I know that, I'm actually in the process of doing it now, I, I thought that they were gonna come and turn it, uh, turn the power off. Well, the power's already off, what happened is, there's no power going to there. The breaker's been shut off on the box, and then there's been a padlock on there, so there's no power that's been there. And then what happened was, they just shut off the electric for Paul after that, because I didn't use the electric. So there's nothing going.
Who did that, Eversource?
Uh, I believe so, yes. Because that pole in the yard, what happens is, I got pictures that were left there, the pole in the wintertime was leaning like this, so it was very dangerous.
Do we still have issues with conservation, Board of Health? They need to get out there, and that's what.
Yeah, that, I, I wanna do everything the right way, that's what I was doing, that's why, that's why Andy told me.
They need to give you a blueprint, but the, the business of residents calling town officials and nobody acting upon those complaints and addressing those complaints, which it clearly looks to me that this has been going on for seven months.
Yeah, I, it, it.
I think if it would have been resolved by town officials.
Yep.
Then maybe you wouldn't have this problem now, Josh, right? Your name's Josh, right?
Yes, correct.
So maybe you wouldn't have this problem now, so I, I, I will say this. We have people in place that are being paid decent money to do a job, they need to do their job. And when I see a report like this with all the issues of complaints and nobody's addressing the complaints.
Yep.
To help you.
Yep.
Somebody absolutely has the right to make complaints of something wrong. You would, if you wouldn't hear somebody doing something wrong, I would, just like everybody else would.
Yep.
Town officials need to act on that information, not just go, oh, let me call him up and see when he's gonna get rid of his garbage, right? It's like telling your kid to go clean his room, and he, that he or she goes and picks up all their crap out of the room and drops it in the living room, was that really cleaning your room?
No, it, no.
So it's, it's, it's.
No, I, I get.
Town officials gotta do their job, right?
I get, I get where you're coming from, but I, it wasn't like I just threw it out there to be a jerk, like my road was blocked, I was trying to move that thing over, cause it was stuck in the road there, and I was trying to move it over, and then she's out there screaming, I say she's gonna call the cops on me, cause I cut down this little tree. You know, and, and it was just pretty ridiculous, and she's coming over there swearing at me, she comes on my property, I just wanted her to stay away from me, and just stay away from me, but, so, I'm throwing junk over there, I'm throwing wood to give away to somebody so they can burn for free, so they can heat their house. You know, I'm trying to be a nice guy here, you know, I'm not putting it out there to be a jerk, my, I, I told the police officer that, that's what he wrote in the police report. Uh, and every time I try to defuse this whole situation, but then I come back, and she got a big pile right in front of the way that all blows into my yard. She has, I have the landscaping guys, pictures of dumping all kinds of stuff over there. So if I'm dumping stuff, she's dumping stuff, she's at fault too, I'm not, I'm not the only one. But my intent was to clean that all up, cause when I come into my yard, I want it to be nice and clean. I'm not doing it to be a jerk or anything, I want my yard to be nice and clean, I put it out there to get access to it, to remove it. And then the whole time, you know, I'm thinking that, we're gonna diffuse the situation and everything. And she's just, every time the landscaping guys, they used to take it in their truck, they're throwing it right in front, right in front of my spot. Where I go into my yard. And, you know, I've been, I hit my truck on the branches and everything, and I, I got, I got them throwing stuff in there, but I'm not the type of guy to go over there and take pictures all day long. I'm just, you know, I own a business, I'm trying to do this house, I'm trying to do everything on, you know, most of it on my own.
I got you. I, I still think that that property warrants, um, for the Board of Health Agent to write a report to the Board of Selectmen.
Agreed.
The wire inspector needs to go out there, make sure that the panel or whatever he's talking about is safe in, in compliance with the lockbox or whatever needs from Eversource, that's where we have wire inspectors for. Conservation agent needs to go out there and take a look at the truckloads of material that were dumped inside of the property to make sure that that's legit.
Oh, can I talk, what, what material are you saying was dumped on the property?
Uh, I'm not saying, somebody else is saying to me, so four truckloads of material was brought in and dropped on the property to level it out.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I brought, I brought in dirt, yeah.
Okay, so dirt, or is it processed gravel, like rock and asphalt and concrete?
It's a little bit of dirt, and it was a little bit to fill in the street, cause the street was getting all washed away.
That you can use on your land, and there's certain materials you can't, right? You can't use processed concrete, brick.
Yeah.
Asphalt, just to dump it in, especially not into wetlands area, right?
No, no, that, and, and I would, I would like to say too, before I bought the property, there was a lot of tires all in the area. I've actually cleaned those out, and I got rid of them mostly at my own expense. He had oil cans, this property was a complete disaster. And I think the people at the town hall knew that, and this lady was just out to give me a hard time, and I'm not, I'm not, really not about that, I just minded my own business, you know, I'm trying to build this house.
That's fine, you just, I think, just think that you need to, this, maybe you need to slow down.
Oh, I, I am.
And get, and do, you know, clean up this area.
Yep.
And then you can do whatever you're gonna do, bring in your trailer and put it over there, and then you clean up another area, and you're doing it a little bit at a time, instead of trying to go gun all. Um, I've been there several times.
You see, when's the last time that you've been there, sir?
Uh, this morning.
So as you see, it's a bigger improvement from what I, what it used to look like, right?
It's, it's, it's an improvement, but it's just, there's still just garbage everywhere, right?
Um, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say there's, there's, like, I put the wood in a pile so somebody can back in and take the wood. There's garbage bags over there, but like I said, those are those pieces of foam.
Okay.
They, they, you know, I, and, and I plan to get rid of every single thing that, that was there, but when she's taking stuff and throwing it on top of my stuff, and then she's telling you guys that I'm dumping stuff over there, and she's doing it too.
Okay. I'll have that, I'll have that conversation with the neighbors.
Please, if you could, I would, I would appreciate that.
I know you're directing it as, as one, but I've been spoken to by a couple of them.
Okay.
Um, I was actually flagged down last week when I was driving down the road.
Oh, you were?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So.
Maybe some of her people, she says she's been there thirty years, and she's always used that land over there, and, you know.
I just, I just think, you know, everybody tried, needs to try to be good neighbors, and I know there's certain things that aggravate other people, but I mean, you're in there trying to clean up the property, I get it. But I still think that the town officials need to do their job and get out there.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And give you some kind of guidance on what needs to be done, right? You have a lot of work in front of you, Title V needs to be done, the septic system and all of that stuff, cause the property transfer of hands.
Correct.
Um, you got a lot of uphill battles with that property, I don't know, you know, a lot of people seem to jump into things lately.
Yeah.
And buy property and then they're told, well, you can't really do that with that property, or you can't really do that with that property, and I always try to advise, to the best of my knowledge. Try to tell people, um, make sure you go to the town or the city to find out before you make that large purchase.
Yep.
Find out what you really can and can't do with the property, because I've seen way too many times, too many people are financially hurt. By assuming that they have the right to do X, Y, and Z and they absolutely don't.
Well, I did go down, cause what happened was I was selling a house on John Street. So I kinda knew Andy and I was talking about it and he told me everything that I needed to do. But in the process, before I was gonna do any of that stuff, I wanted to at least clean up the yacht and start with a clean slate. There was, there was just stuff everywhere and as far as the fire goes, you know, like. I hired a guy, you know, he started a fire, it was an accident, like I'm over there starting fires and stuff, you know, I. She came and talked to me once, you know, in the beginning, she goes, oh, the fire started up when you left, like, oh, I'm very sorry, I didn't have water on at the time and I was just burning little pieces of wood and stuff like that and I would. Burn like food when I've eaten over there and stuff, but you know, I was keeping it down.
Do you have a water meter over there?
I do, yes, correct. Yep.
Alright.
Still think we need to have the, I know, we need to have the building inspector, wiring inspector, health agent, conservation agent go out there with an order to correct.
Yeah, and I agree, Mr. Chairman, I think at this point, you know, you explained yourself, which I appreciate you coming down. But at this point, we need to start from scratch and we need to make sure this is done the right way. So I, I completely agree with this, Mr. Chairman. Let's just start, start clean slate. Resolve any issues that we have, make sure everything's being done.
I was trying to do that from the beginning as well, cause you know, I got a daughter, I gotta live next to this girl, you know, like. It sucks living next to somebody like this, I thought I got the greatest deal in the world, this little piece of property.
Yeah, well, I think, you know what, I, I think if you clean up the garbage out on the paper street, right? Um, get rid of that, the bags of garbage or whatever it is, the wood piles is one thing, you can get rid of that to anybody, but there's more than. Enough people out there that are willing to take that wood pile.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
It's basically a pickup truck load of wood, wood, I've seen that as well.
Well, actually, there is, there is a little bit more, it goes down the whole fence line. But it's all cut and split, I would hate to just throw it away.
I'll come by tomorrow and get it.
Yeah, hey, there you go, you can have it.
So, uh, with that said, I mean, we just gotta have town officials get out there and do their job, um, and I think they need to come back with a report within two weeks. The board of selectmen on this issue and make sure there's a corrective action put in place. Um, for all the neighbors over there, right, and I'll, and I'll just leave you with this, Josh. If you're gonna burn, you have to make sure that the coals are out.
Yep.
You can't just walk away from the property, cause picture your daughter, right? Going over there when everybody's gone and some kid walks in there again, we talked about the wiring over there, right? Picture your daughter going over there and messing around with a stick or whatever and, oh, look, there's a fire and all of a sudden, poof. And the face gets burned, right?
I know that, sir.
You have, you have a responsibility for your child, you also have a responsibility for everybody else in your neighborhood to make sure your property's safe. And I know that they're not supposed to be on your property, but they're little kids, they don't know about it.
I know that, I do have a rope up over there and the thing is, it ain't like the, the electrical wire is all like live and you can go touch it and get zapped, you know, and.
I don't, I don't know that though, Josh, right? And I don't think other people know that, right, and so we just gotta make sure that the wiring inspector gets out there, does what he needs to do.
Doing their job.
Put the, put the wires up where they can't be grabbed from the ground, right? Harness them up, coil them up or whatever, make sure the power is dead. Um, and there's no live wires there and then everybody else needs to get involved and, and write a report back to the board and get you into compliance and make sure you're pulling all the permits that you're supposed to pull. To do what you do need to do out there, that's all.
Yep, that's, that's fine with me, that's all.
And then, and then at least then I can, if I have people that are complaining to me, I can say, he's all set. I've done my job, the board's done their job, would, would everybody, all our town officials, everybody's being held accountable to do their job.
Yep.
And that's what we're setting right now is the action.
And one other thing too, it's like, I'm having people go over there checking out the job and she goes onto my property, like the other day, I'm talking to this guy about my trailer, he was gonna do some work, give me a proposal on it. And she goes on my property, goes, are you the town, you work for the town, and the guy goes, no. And I was like, tell that lady to get off my property, I told her a million times not to go on my property, but she comes on it all the time and like she's just. She's, she's asking, what are you doing with your septic, I could swear she works for the town.
Right.
You know, it's just, I'm not trying to start trouble, it's just like, it's.
I think, I think because I put this on as an agenda item, Josh.
Yep.
I think that, you know, maybe they're watching now, maybe they're not watching now, but at least I can refer them to this meeting to say.
Please.
You know, we had that conversation with that individual, right? Um, things will be done a little bit differently and moving in the, in the future with your property to be done and done the right way. Not only for your protection, but all the residents' protections.
Right.
Um, and like I said, you know, people just need to do, the town officials need to do their job. They can't just say, oh, he's a nice guy, he'll get it cleaned up, how much time do you need, it's not the way a town operates, right? They should be sending you a cease and desist if there's that big of a, not just you, anybody, right? And say, this is how many days you have to clean it up. End of story, we don't sit there and go, well, yeah, well, how many days you want, three hundred and sixty-five, no problem.
Just kinda thought that she was just trying to push up people's buttons and cause trouble, but I understand, you guys gotta do your job and make sure everything's. Safe and everything and I, you know, I don't disagree with that whatsoever, so.
So we're just get you on, we're just gonna try to get you back on track, right, so you can continue doing whatever you need to do over there and if you could just clean up the garbage as ASAP.
Correct.
Um, get rid of it, right?
Yep.
I'm sure that you have friends that have dumpsters, whatever it may be, if you can get the bags and stuff like that out of the way.
And I'll leave whatever.
The wood is one thing, right, it's firewood, everybody's got firewood piles in the yacht. I'm not so worried about the firewood pile, right?
Okay.
But it's, it's the garbage bags, it just, it gives a bad appearance. Um, it looks like crap, it's not on your property, it's on a paper street now, so technically we don't even have to.
The reason why I wasn't doing it so great because the cops told me not to touch it, cause I originally were telling them that I was gonna clean it up, but then I told them that, you know, I've got pictures of her dumping stuff over there too. And it was like, I just knew it was gonna be an ongoing problem and I just tried to, you know, make sure it wasn't an ongoing problem.
I don't know why anybody would tell you not to touch it, right, you need, it's your mess, you need to clean it up, get it out of there, appease the neighbor. Hopefully everything's gonna be done and done right, they'll see town officials going over there doing their job to appease the neighbors, the neighborhood.
Yep.
Right? Um, and they'll see that things are being done and done the right way and hopefully you'll be left alone.
Okay, got it, clean it up right away, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you guys.
Should we, um, should we? What's that, yeah, I don't know. You know what, I don't want anybody to. Is there a motion to have the building inspector, wiring inspector, health agent and the conservation, conservation agent to go out? Um, review the property? And come back with a?
I'd like the, uh, motion to say request the border health, have the health agent go out. At request of the board of selectmen.
What do you want me to do, make a motion to have the separate one then?
No, just in that, not just have the health agent, but have the board or?
Make a motion to have the building inspector, wiring inspector, health agent through the board of health. And conservation agent go out to the property and write up a report on what needs to be done, um, on the property, move it forward. Yep.
So moved.
In order to correct, basically. I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Inkley.
Thank you.
GPW P, let's get through, when else is Chapter Ninety, I come this time on, I'm checking Ninety's last.
It's on the back.
So paving Middle Road, um, Mr. Inkley, as you know, oh God, I don't even know, thirty, forty-five days ago, maybe sixty days ago. We put out some streets for. Yes, paved Middle Road. Bedano, Corey, Henrietta. But there was three other streets that were added into the bid specs, it was Wilbur, Myrtle and Henrietta, which is a connection of. And it's only thirty-five feet of Wilbur, Myrtle. And Henrietta. So those technically shouldn't have been in, town council weighed in and said it's okay, you can still move forward with or wouldn't the bid, blah, 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 blah. The problem with that is the season's over, there's still asphalt plans that are open, PJ Keating shutting down, they are the only ones that bid on the, on the project. Um, but I've had a conversation and their plant's closing Tuesday of next week. Um, although the company has offered, um, the president has offered, after I had a conversation with him, has offered to go over, take a look at it, he wants Mr. Menad. Um, cause I talked about the trenches are all sunk in, right? EverSource gave us bad information. Um, or confusing information, Mr. Kelly, however, we wanna put that, right, that's why I went out to bid that way.
Yep.
Because it was, remember with the Dan thing, it was supposed to be the full curb to curb on Middle Road, but now we're not doing it. Um, the Wilbur, Myrtle were part of that curb to curb, so it just got a little bit screwed up, whatever Source and the communication from their gas line and. I'm still going back and forth with them over Henrietta. North Anthony, I'm sorry, at the top. Because I don't think they allocated enough money, cause that's a newly paved road and they shouldn't have trenched it, but they did, so it's curb to curb, and I don't think they allocated enough money, so. The problem that I have is I, I feel it's part of Middle Road down by the fiery MS. Over to, I refer to as Balls Corner.
Yeah.
Um, that trench going across from Victor Street, somebody laid a trench across there to get sewer down there. Um, and I think Dan just kinda let the job go a little shady because he felt that they were gonna be paved it surely thereafter, right? Now we have issues with snow and ice coming.
Yep.
And I, I, I look at some of the streets, the Bedano Corey area where there's some getting really bad, um, and the EverSource alluded that they are responsible for Henrietta, the thirty-five feet in.
Yep.
And that's got a monster gap inside of it, hole. And there's a lot of seniors that are around that area, walking with little kids and baby carriages and things of the like. So I'm, I'm disappointed that those roads won't be paved now. Um, and PJ Keating made it clear to me that they would never wanna do the paving job. Um, this late in the season because of the temperature, right, and they're not gonna compromise the integrity of their work, um, just to appease. Us.
Correct.
So I get it, but they also offered, um, to have Mr. Menad speak with Mr. Pavel from their paving department over here and he alluded if he had to go out. To Rochester, I guess, to buy some paving, he would work a deal with Mr. Menad to, I guess they call it shimmying. Which is basically just like an overlay, I guess.
Correct.
Where they just kinda let it go over the holes and fill that in and smooth it out until the spring to be able to go out and do the work. So I would like to have Mr. Menad at least. Go out there and assess that and see if he's feels I can do it with him. And show him what's going on and have that conversation with Mr. Menad and see if he wants to have that conversation and we have to allocate some funds. We could do it out of the road paving line item that's in the DPW budget. Um, short money, I think, to do it, we could find out what it would be.
It could get a lot worse once snow starts following, falling and plows start hitting those trenches.
It's pretty ugly now and unfortunately the trenches, um, they're not towards the middle of the road, they're at the edge of the road where everybody goes out to the nailboxes, right? So, um, it's, you know, it's a safety issue, I think, I think, um, Mr. Menad and I could take a ride out there and if he wants to have a conversation and bring something back to the board at the twenty-eighth meeting. Or sooner, we can do a quick meeting.
Sure.
Just to do something with that, to see what the cost would be if they wanna work out the deal to get out there and do that shipment. I know Mr. Menad don't have the crew anymore, we're short, I think, three guys in DPW right now. So there's no way that he can get out there unless he tells me otherwise and he says, I can do it in-house, cause it's just a skim thing, maybe he wants to do it, I don't know. So is there a motion to have me work with? Mr. Menad on trying to smooth out the potholes throughout these trenches from EverSource?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly, you don't have anything to add to that, do you?
Nope.
Thank you for volunteering for that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm just a. I'm a road guy, I don't like to see my roads and I don't like to see my residents aggravated and that's what I have is. A bunch of aggravated residents because they were led to believe that it was gonna be paved and. Unfortunately, the cold season's upon us and the way things took a little bit of time to get off the bid, right? Waiting for that timeframe and we ran into some issues, so that's that. The. Betterment for Cock Street and. Order of the Assessment of a Sewer Privilege Fee in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have, uh, Chapter Ninety funds. For Perry Hill Road, Middle Road and Anthony Street, and if you remember. We had approved Anthony Street, was done down there and again, another EverSource.
Mess.
Mess down on, on Anthony Street, Mr. Menad and DPW, they. Well, we outsourced for them to go into a total reclamation of the road, they just grind everything all up, they put a new basin and then they paved it, um, that road's done, looks, looks decent. Um, a lot better than what those folks had. Um, in the past, I've spoken to a lot of residents over there, they're, they're pretty happy with that.
Yeah.
Work. And we did approve. Hundred ninety for Perry Hill Road, seventy for Middle Road from DWA to Lynn Allen. And then the remaining balance from what wasn't given for Anthony Street, I think, EverSource's allocation was forty-seven thousand dollars. And they said seventy-seven, um, so two ninety, that comes out to the two ninety to thirty, um, and then I was informed that they had to take twenty thousand. Out of the road paving line item from the DPW budget for an overage and I said, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, it's, you know, not a big deal, twenty thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things.
Yep.
Um, to get the job and complete the job, a little cost overrun, but nothing major, so is there a motion to approve the removal of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars out of Chapter Ninety funds?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy out of municipal funds.
They already did that, they moved it. The two ninety.
But. You're signing the documents, so if the motion could contain that.
You want me to make a motion to expend twenty-one thousand?
Eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
Where are you seeing that number, Jamie?
Front page.
All from municipal funds, you want me to do that?
Yep.
Is there a motion to expend twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-eight cents from municipal funds?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Town administrator's report?
I've got a couple ongoing issues. Uh, met today, that was the second meeting with EverSource. We agreed today for Monday, we're going out to meet with the neighbors on the. Uh, power pole changes. For the new service to the Titleist test site.
What are you doing?
We're going out with EverSource, we had two meetings with EverSource. Because of the neighbors' objections.
Correct.
To the new service relocation of the poles.
Correct.
So EverSource has agreed to go out. The neighbors are coming to meet with EverSource and town staff on the road. Monday at eight-thirty AM. And there, EverSource is going to show them the options of moving the poles from where they were originally staked. So they won't be directly in front of people's houses, obstructing views, et cetera.
I remember, I remember that conversation with some of the residents over there, so those residents, anyone that had a stake in the middle of the yacht, you're saying they were notified?
We've notified them today, given them the option, two neighbors have agreed to be there.
Okay. We would still have to do it in a, in a hearing.
Yeah, but before they submit the paperwork.
Yeah, of course, they're gonna try to get agreement from the neighbors so that they, they don't have a problem when they come front of the board.
Correct.
Because we're the ones that do poll hearings.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And, uh, even though Verizon is the one with the poles there. EverSource is providing the new service to Titleist. Uh, both EverSource and Titleist have told me they're having, uh, distinct, uh, problems. Dealing with Verizon, but, uh, EverSource told us that where they put the states will be where Verizon puts the poles.
Alright, okay.
Uh, I also met with the state office of.
Is there a selectman going to that meeting?
We just scheduled it, uh, literally in the middle of the day today, we get the agreement, we met with EverSource this morning.
I'll go, I got Monday off, so.
I'm not up at eight-thirty.
I'm already up for three hours, so.
Alright, you wanna, you wanna attend?
Yeah.
On behalf of the board of selectmen?
Monday, eight-thirty AM, Manchester Lane.
This, this Monday, Jamie coming?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Inkley.
You're welcome.
Anything, anything else, Mr. Kelly?
I met recently by Zoom with the Office of Economic Development, the state. Uh, they're the ones who gave us a twenty-five K and a grant to prepare the RFP for the Russell Library. We agreed on the paperwork they're going to need and we will be sending that out, not on the grant, but on the information of the Russell. Not on the grant, but on the information of the Russell. That is as a result of the article you passed at town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I also met with Serpent, and they're going to provide us with a scope of what they're able to assist us on, on the update of the master plan uh, in light of the hundred thousand dollars we've got, we got from the state and a grant to update the master plan.
Okay. How about the? How about the eighty, we got eighty grand for the council on aging, didn't we? For a roof?
No, it's for improvements to the council on aging. That includes the roof, the, a water heater, uh, some bathroom work, uh, downspouts, uh, and, uh, the completion of the door.
Will we do the roof in the spring?
I don't think we're gonna do it in the winter. But the real issue here is, uh, it's basic, uh, not restricted to the roof, it's improvements throughout the building.
I know, but we talked about a roof, right?
Yeah, that's a major.
That's the priority.
Right.
That's a major part of the program.
Yep.
And I've been meeting with the school about the ventilation issues, et cetera, in the elementary school. And we will be meeting with the legislative delegation once we schedule that after the Thanksgiving holiday, to see if there's any state funds available. We found out that the, when the system was put in, it was not calibrated properly. And, uh, we're looking at anywhere from, and the school is gonna be closed Thanksgiving week while we do a deep cleaning on the school.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, you're talking anywhere from a hundred to five hundred thousand.
Unbelievable.
And we're hoping we can get in the outside section of the next budget and have another earmark.
Okay, very good.
And thank you, gentlemen, for all your efforts at town meeting. I think it was because of the board that it was a very successful town meeting.
It was. It was, um, it was nice to, uh, have the residents engage, um, to the state, right? With the board and, and members of the, of the town, and I think that's what town meeting's all about. Um, is answering questions to our public, right, and raising concerns and asking questions. And it's our job to do our best to try to answer those questions and concerns. And if we, if we don't have the answer that night, um, we'll move expeditiously to get those answers for whoever has concerns.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Hinkley, do you have anything?
I do, actually, to touch base on what you just brought up. A gentleman by the name of Phil Adam reached out about, uh, electric car chargers at town meeting. And, um, this weekend, I, I followed up the next day with, um, different people to ask if they did work, and I was told they did. Um, then I found out that they didn't. So me and Mr. Adam actually ended up meeting up at the library. Uh, he happens to have an electric car, and he left there and went to a couple other stations and found out uh, which ones work and which ones don't. Um, so we have a list now. Um, Tanya already reached out to the companies to see if there's still a warranty. Start there, and then if it's warranted, we're gonna get it fixed pretty quickly. Uh, if not, we're gonna send out an electrician and get him back up into operational status.
To follow up on that. In some cases, one side of the charger works, the other side doesn't. Uh, they're not under warranty. Uh, we are going to get prices to see what's going on. I also met with our insurance agent today, and we are going to be listing them separately because, uh, the issues, uh, involved with them, safety issues that you and I have discussed, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, sure.
That, uh, we want to make sure that the town has no liability. We also are, I informed the, uh, Hub International that they should go talk to the school business manager, because if they're going to continue to, uh, install arrays of solar, uh, on the parking lot, then, uh, he said that's a whole separate issue. And I think then the town, uh, the school should be talking to the vendor to make sure that they, if they're, if they're going to own the solar arrays and the, the lease include a, uh, provision that they carry the insurance.
Good idea. Very good idea, actually.
Because from what he told me it would cost to replace those, I don't want the liability.
Plating of one of the panels?
The whole array.
The array.
Yeah, we're, if we're leasing, that's on them. We don't have any liability.
No, they're leasing from us, the, uh, real estate.
Right, but I thought you were talking about liability insurance for the panels?
Yeah, so I want to make sure they cover it. Or if it's on us, then it's included in the price of the lease that they pay us through our insurance company.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Either way, we ain't paying for it.
Nope.
Wouldn't make any sense. It's counterintuitive. You gotta save money on that side, but you're gonna pay it on the other side. So what are you really saving?
And all we need is one lightning strike.
I know, I know a guy, don't worry. Mr. Chairman, one more thing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, like I always do, uh, information-only section. Uh, kind of touching base on open positions, this is more about open committees and boards. There are plenty of vacancies, um, more alternate vacancies than regular ones, but there are still many committees and boards that need members. Um, Agricultural Commission has two alternate vacancies, Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety has three vacancies. Vote of Appeals is one alternate vacancy, Bylaw Review Committee, three alternate vacancies. Uh, Community Preservation Committee, those are internal vacancies that we need already seated members of boards to do. Uh, Finance Committee, one vacancy, that's an important one, guys. Uh, and Open Space Committee, three vacancies. So there are plenty of options for people to get involved with this town. Um, even if it's a committee that doesn't meet that often, it's a good way to learn how the town operates and get in and, uh, makes it a lot easier to get involved.
Absolutely.
If anybody's interested, send a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen, and we review them and we appoint as necessary.
And I guess I'm just gonna say, uh, Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Grateful, grateful.
It's close.
Oh, I want everybody to have a Happy Thanksgiving, but most importantly, a Safe Thanksgiving. Um, enjoy your time with your family. Don't drink too much. I'll do that for you. Is there a motion? Oh, the next meeting is November twenty-eighth at four-thirty PM. Public hearing will be the first on the agenda, tax classification public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now adjourned.